Twenty twenty five, meeting of the company planning board to order. Roll call. Mr. Zuck. Here. Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Butler.
Here.
Mr. Scound is absent. Ms. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Dombrosia.
Here.
Mr. Costa.
Present.
Mr. O'Neil.
Here.
And the chair is present. Approval of the planning board minutes of September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. I have a notation that this item will be continued to the December fourth, twenty twenty five meeting.
We didn't complete it from the last meeting. We'll have it for the next meeting.
Okay. And there is a request that we move Hunting Hill up to the first item on the agenda if there's no objection.
The McCary or Hunting Hill?
Hunting Hill. Correct. This is item number five. All right. Major change to final plan. Owner applicant Eric Sejen Wyken Properties. Project name the preserve at Hunting Hill. Location Meadowbrook Drive assesses plat thirty five lot one eighty eight. Zoning is R three with public water and public sewer. The applicant requests to not construct sidewalks as shown on the recorded final plan. Ms. McBarry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a request for a major change to the approved final plan for the preserve at Hunting Hill. So just a little project background. The project was approved by the planning board at the preliminary plan stage in September of twenty eighteen and the final plan was recorded in July of twenty nineteen. The development includes twenty four buildings with a total of one hundred and fifteen two bedroom townhouse style condominiums. So the applicant is requesting a major change to the approved final plan regarding sidewalk installation within the development. I'd like to note that notice was sent out to the neighbors for this major change. Because this constitutes a major change under the land development and subdivision regulations, the planning board approval is required. I'd like to clarify that this is not a request for a waiver from the town's land development regulations. The key distinction here lies in how the internal roadways of the development are classified. So under the town zoning ordinance, a street within a private development is defined as a separate tract meant to serve multiple adjacent properties and it must meet municipal town standards. A driveway, by contrast, is just simply a travel lane providing access to garages or parking areas within a lot. So based on this, the paved accessways within Hunting Hill are considered driveways, not streets. Therefore, the sidewalk requirements applicable to streets do not apply in this situation. So the planning department recommends approval of this major change because the internal driveways do not require sidewalks under the applicable regulations and all relevant town staff are in consensus and that includes the building official and the public works director.
Board, any questions for Ms. McBarry? Ms. McDonald?
I guess it's an observation. Is this, are we possibly looking at future developments designed in such a similar fashion so that a driveway precludes having to construct sidewalks?
Within a private development, I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Okay. We'll hear from the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, Attorney John Chakachi for the applicant, the builder of Wycon. Mr. Eric Yagan, who's the principal in the builder of the development, is available for any specific questions. But we've been working with the town for some time now to make sure that all the different department heads had their input and supported our request. We've done a poll with all the prior buyers of the units and the overwhelming majority don't want the sidewalks. As the development lays out, the way the ledge comes in and the tightness of it, it really wouldn't be functional to put the sidewalks at this time. So we're obviously very happy if the board would allow us to leave it in its current state and get the modification that we require.
Board, any questions? Okay.
And once again, any specific questions for the developer?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
More than happy to answer them because he knows it from the beginning.
Mr. Zuck.
Thank you. I have a comment, really, not a question. I just want to say for the record that, in general, I would be in favor of having sidewalks. I think sidewalks are a good thing. But in this case, since the sidewalks would not connect this development with another area and considering installing the sidewalks would take up what little green space there is in those front yards already, I see it as reasonable to not construct the sidewalks.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil.
I'm glad you mentioned that because I kind of have a similar thought. I was a little torn on this one as well. But my mom, she shouldn't be sitting on her.
No? Can you hear me now? I was a little torn on this, just like Mr. Zuck said, but my, I guess my thinking on this was similar to his that because there's no sidewalk that runs along Meadowbrook Drive and the portion that kind of connects from Mendon to the development through other single family properties, there's really no opportunity for a really beneficial connectivity on the pedestrian network there. So, you know, because there isn't, I'm sort of a little bit more okay with this. So I have similar sentiments to Mr. Zuck on this one.
Mr. Butler.
I'll just hop on the bandwagon and say that I agree with my colleagues, but I would take it a little bit further in that when this was first on the agenda, I don't know, sometime in the spring maybe, I did take a ride up to the development. I hadn't been there since construction started. And then I just happened to be in the area the other night. So as I was passing by going to chops, I pulled into Meadowbrook and I went up into the development. So obviously, it's much more built out now than it was whenever it was five or six months ago. So my observation was that where sidewalk, just the way the development is laid out with townhouses, there really is, whatever it is, a six or eight foot wide driveway, three feet of grass, eight feet of driveway, three feet of grass. So we're really looking at putting sidewalks, you know, in three foot segments in between driveways. The other observation I made was that I went through, it was probably like five ten, five fifteen, so I guess a lot of people were home for work. Just like in my neighborhood, people have garages, but for some reason don't want to park their car in a garage. So everyone seemed to have their cars in their driveway and the driveways are very short. So I noticed that just about everybody, you know, they obviously, they parked the front of their car maybe a foot from the garage door and the back of their car was maybe six inches from the road. So even if you had the little three foot sidewalks, if somebody tried to walk down the sidewalk, they'd have to get off the sidewalk to walk around the car, get back on the sidewalk, go around. A common sense person would just walk in the street rather than in and out and in and out and in and out. So in this particular development, I just don't know that the juice is worth the squeeze. As my colleague said, I think we're very cognizant of the fact that the town has spent a significant amount of time and money. And if you read comments in the Valley Breeze, people in this town are very concerned about sidewalks. And so I would typically not ever grant a waiver from sidewalks. But again, I think this is a very unique development and I'm just not sure that sidewalks are warranted on one side of each street or driveway or whatever we're going to call it. So I agree with my colleagues.
Anyone else? Mr. Dombrosia.
Yeah, I'm not trying to belabor this whole thing because I agree as well. My question actually is more, I guess, towards town. Considering there's now a pocket of higher density population there and when you look at Chimney Hill and Cumberland Crossing, while those are both technically streets, I guess, they have sidewalks, they connect that population down to Mendon Road where there's groceries, pharmacy, all of that, does it, do we know if the town has any plans to put a sidewalk on Meadowbrook? Is that in, should be that, should that be a consideration considering?
I don't know if that's in our sidewalk plan.
Okay.
Not aware of that. The sidewalk's more, you know, down here in, down in the valley, other places, but I'm not aware of that stretch.
Okay. I'm just wondering, you know, as we promote walkability, it seems like filling in that gap would be more beneficial than an interior sidewalk system.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McDonald.
One more observation. The idea that it's self-contained, at the moment it is, but in looking at Google Maps, the wooded area to the east, which I believe goes into the vicinity of Scott Road, I don't know who owns the land, but if it's privately owned, someday there's a better than even chance it's going to be developed. So the idea that sidewalks are not needed here in the sense that there's no connectivity, that probably is not going to be a condition that remains in perpetuity. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, everyone knows my feeling about sidewalks. I've always been a proponent of sidewalks and very rarely do I ever, ever vote for the, a sidewalk waiver. But I'm looking at this project and as Mr. Butler had already mentioned, it seems to me that in most of the area, it's very impractical because you've got this driveway sidewalk combination situation and it doesn't make sense to have, you know, your driveway and you take four steps across the driveway and three steps on the little sidewalk and then another four steps on the driveway. So from an impractical point of view, I will agree with my colleagues here on that. As far as, and I do understand that the stance that this is considered to be a driveway and not a street and based on that analysis, I will vote in favor of the proposed, it's not a waiver, but the elimination of the sidewalks.
You don't expect it to allow to owners and neighbors?
Yeah.
There are public hearings.
Well, it's also advertised as a public hearing, so that's, that's the next step. So this is a public hearing. I will ask if there's anyone here in the audience or watching virtually, if they have any questions or comments regarding this proposal, please come forward to the podium and give us your name and address for the record or wave your hand and then click that little button on your computer. Anyone in the queue? Nobody in the queue? And seeing that there's nobody here in the audience that has any questions, I will close the public hearing at seven, six forty nine P M. Mr. Comments to the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion in regards to the preserve at Hunting Hill that we approve the requested major change to the final plan regarding sidewalks based on the recommendation of the planning department staff as outlined in their memo to the planning board dated July twenty third, two thousand twenty five.
I have motion by Mr. Butler, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote then. Okay. Mr. Zuck?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Scound's absent. Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrosia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So the motion passes six to one. I thank, I thank you.
Mr. Chair, you have eight, so it was a seven to one vote.
I'm sorry. Okay, yes, correct. I'm sorry. All right. Moving back up to the top. Zoning board review recommendation, owner applicant Michael and Monique Shop and Tear. Location fifty seven Pound Road assesses plat, and it's reading here as assesses plat thirty one, lot twenty one. Zoning is A two with no public water and with public sewer and with no public water and sewer. The applicant requests a variance from front yard setback to build an additional garage extension on the property with a front yard setback sixty five point five six feet. The minimum requirement front yard setback is seventy five feet, so less than ten feet of relief is requested.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Fifty seven Pound Road is requesting a variance to build an additional twelve by twenty foot garage extension with a front yard setback of sixty five point six six feet. The requested relief is less than ten feet as the required front yard setback is seventy five feet. Existing house and garage were built in nineteen eighty five, would not be able to be built today given the current setback requirements. The applicant previously requested a variance for garage extension in twenty seventeen with a proposed footprint of three hundred and fifteen square feet, larger than the currently proposed. The request was approved, but the applicant was unable to build the garage due to applicant's circumstances. The proposed garage is reasonable given the practical location from the driveway and the pre-existing non-conforming garage and house structure. Planning department finds that the project is consistent with the goals and purposes of the comprehensive plan and recommends forwarding a positive review, recommendation to the zoning board review for the requested variance for a front yard setback.
Board, have any questions for Mr. Lombardo? Hearing then, we'll hear from the applicant. Mr. Shop and Tear.
I'm Michael Shop and Tear, looking for a variance to build a small garage. My wife and I would like to put her up. If we could have it, that would be great.
It's okay. Relax. If there's anything else you wanted to add other to what you provided in the application?
No.
Okay. Board, have any questions for Mr. Shop and Tear? Thank you. Quite painless.
All set. Thank you very much.
Like to hear from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion in regards to fifty seven Pound Road assesses plat thirty eight, lot twenty one, that we send a positive recommendation to the zoning board of review for the requested variance for front yard setback. As the proposed project is consistent with the goals and purposes of the comprehensive plan, this recommendation is made based on the findings in the planning department's memo to the planning board dated October twenty third, two thousand twenty five.
I have a motion by Mr. Butler.
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Costa. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes yes, motion carries. Next item of business is a public hearing. Project type administrative subdivision unified development review preliminary plan, owner Bernard and Jean Benoit, applicant Benoit Family Trust, location two four five and two four seven West Rantham Road assesses plat sixty lots twenty four and twenty nine, A two with no public water and no public sewer. The applicant proposes to move the lot line on assesses plat sixty lots twenty four and twenty nine to accommodate a new septic system. Both lots are undersized by area and contain pre-existing dwelling. As the lot area of two hundred and four, as the lot area of two forty five West Rantham Road assesses plat sixty lot twenty nine will be reduced, the application, applicant requires a variance from the minimum lot area. Ms. McBarry? Oh. I'm sorry. Let's up the page again. Mr. Lombardo.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Two forty five and two forty seven West Rantham Road is a unified development review application with the applicant seeking relief from dimensional requirements for moving a one thousand six hundred and ninety three square foot piece of lot twenty nine to lot twenty four. This is required as the applicant is looking to install a new septic system and this is the only reasonable location for a septic system to go, given that there is a large ledge outcrop that bisects both areas. Both lots twenty four and twenty nine are pre-existing non-conforming and share a ledge outcrop that limits the areas for new septic systems to be constructed on the both lots. By moving one thousand six hundred and ninety three square feet from lot twenty nine to twenty four, lot twenty nine will become more non-conforming while lot twenty four becomes more conforming by area. However, as this is the most reasonable location for a new septic system, the Cumberland Planning Department finds that the application is consistent with the goals and purposes of the comprehensive plan and recommends approval of the unified development review.
Board, have any questions for Mr. Lombardo? Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you. I think that was a fairly wonderful presentation you gave on that project. Joshua Morrow, Insight Engineers. And I don't have much more to add unless you have questions. The goal is to swap property from one lot to the other. The owners are the same and the goal is to install a septic system there. This ledge, as you mentioned, there's no public sewer or public water, so there is a well there, there's a ledge outcrop and both lots are pre-existing non-conforming, so it's a give and take. And the sixteen hundred square feet out of an A two zone is what we are requesting. I don't believe it's prior action of the owner, et cetera. Questions?
Board, have any questions? The only question that I have, it does show two systems.
It does. Both are getting replaced.
Okay.
There's two cesspools there, DEM as a big phase out that they call it and they're pretty detrimental to the environment, so.
That's the only question that I had because it showed the plan exactly.
There are two.
Actually shows two.
Both permits are in hand, so DEM's on board with the application as we proposed it.
Okay. Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion in regards to two forty five and two forty seven West Rantham Road assesses plat sixty lots twenty four and twenty nine that we approve the administrative subdivision unified development review preliminary plan as requested as the application is consistent with the goals and purposes of the comprehensive plan based on the findings of fact in the staff memo to the planning board dated ten twenty three, two thousand twenty five.
I have a motion by Mr. Butler. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Reese. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six. Excuse me. Public hearing, project type, major land development and unified development review, master preliminary plan. Project name ground mounted solar. Owner Jason McCary. Applicant Diamond Hill Road LLC. Location three one zero zero Diamond Hill Road assesses plat twenty nine lot forty two. Zoning is A two with no public water and no public sewer. The applicant proposes to construct a ground mounted medium scale solar energy system accessory use at the subject property. The property has an existing single family house with a ground mounted solar array. The project requires a special use permit to erect a solar array. Ms. McBarry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is an application, as you just stated, for a ground mounted medium scale solar energy system as an accessory use. So brief project overview, the property is approximately twenty three acres with an existing home and an existing solar array. The applicant is proposing a second solar array, which will be located directly south of the existing one. The footprint of the proposed solar array is twenty thousand five hundred square feet. The property is zoned A two and in this zone, a medium scale ground mounted solar array is allowed by special use permit. The project meets all specific and objective standards required for a solar installation and no variances are being requested. Little background on the pre-existing solar installation, so that was approved in twenty twenty one with a modified vegetative buffer requirement. However, the required planting was not fully installed. The west and south sides of the existing array do not have the twenty foot vegetative buffer that they require. So to rectify this and to meet the special use permit requirements, the planning department is recommending the following. So first, the installation of a twenty foot vegetative buffer along the west side of the existing array. The installation of low profile plantings twenty feet wide along the south side of the existing array. And then the installation of a twenty foot vegetative buffer on the southwest and east sides of the new array. The planning department finds the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan's goal of promoting renewable energy, the zoning ordinance, including the special use permit requirements for solar. So we are recommending approval of the combined master and preliminary plan.
Board, have questions for Ms. McBarry? Thank you. We'll hear from the applicant. Mr. Parryton.
Thank you, Scott Parryton, for the applicant. As Ms. McBarry has indicated, the project is, again, is going right next to the existing solar we had approved back in twenty twenty one, again, with variances for the twenty foot buffer. So there were only two sides, as noted in the staff report. My understanding, and I expected, I actually expected the applicant to be present, hopefully he will show. My understanding was that they, that Mr. Monique had gone to the site and that there was some, I don't know if there was an agreement, but there was certainly some discussion about the need for one of the sides. I'm not sure, it would be the west, I guess, looking down the west, that there's already, if you look at the overhead, you look at the photos, I mean, there is an extensive wooded area there that exists now. I know there was a discussion back in twenty one about Billington Circle out in the back and the elevation and the view and whatnot, but when it, when you talk about the buffers, I think that, I think the reason, at least the reason I understood from the applicant was that, the reason why the west side was not planted was basically because this, it's just woods, this forest there. But I'll jump back to that, I'm sure that's going to be discussion on that. But obviously, on the positive side of this, you've got a situation with no variances, you've got no, no core forest issues, no DEM issues. And, and again, now that there are specific objective criteria with respect to the special use permit, that's tailored specifically to this type of use, I think it's a great, great assistance to any board that's reviewing these type of proposals. All of these are met, as Ms. McBarry indicated. So as far as an approval in this instance, I think it really doesn't leave much to question. I do have the solar engineers, I know they're here, I know they are in town because they have emailed me and they're on their way. And I did want them present, I always want them present for these cases because there were questions about technology, there were questions about safety, there were questions about access, even though we've supplied, you know, access plans and going forward, and maintenance plans going forward and responded to the specific criteria listed in the ordinance. I think probably at this point, what I would, what I would like to do is start with Dan Campbell who's here, who engineered the project. Maybe he could give a brief overview of the site and hopefully will buy us enough time so that my solar people here can answer the questions about the array that you might have. Equal in size, as you can see, equal in size, I believe the wattage is a little bit different. bit different, but actually, I think this is a little bit less, actually, but still medium solar.
Good evening, Daniel Campbell, Level Design Group for the applicant. What we have is a residential site. The solar field, the existing and proposed, are approximately 85 feet down from the roadway elevation. It's on private property. Directly to the west, we have DEM wetlands. We're just outside of the buffer zones. Associated with that, we've got onsite swale drainage, and as far as the planting plan we've proposed on the new array, 20 feet around the three sides associated with the ordinance. It is officially two separate arrays, so we do have new fencing for the second array. The new fencing for the second array, in accordance with requests, is critter available, so it's got a six-inch gap underneath it to allow animals to pass through, wildlife especially considering where we are. Certainly happy to answer any questions about the site.
Board, do you have any questions? Okay. Oh, Mr. Dambrosia.
I know you mentioned that the solar array is about 85 feet lower than Diamond Hill Road.
Correct.
Few considerations from across the valley, from Billington Circle, has that been looked at?
Sure. Again, the across the valley, they are sitting higher than we are, but we do have a substantial amount of forest on this property, as well as their properties prior to getting there.
Any other question? Okay, Mr. Parryton.
Mr. Dambrosia, as a matter of fact, as I indicated earlier, that was also questioned, or that was discussed, excuse me, in the 2021 application as well. Again, I have representatives from Infusion here, who are the solar engineers, with respect to any of the construction, any of, again, maintenance, future access, operation, anything, questions of those nature. Again, I just wanted to make sure they were present for any questions specifically.
No questions?
Surprising. Well, I'm glad you're here anyway, guys. Again, I saw the conditions that were listed in the plan, and the conditions, rather, in the staff report. Again, board's going to vote the way they vote. Again, in light, I would suggest that in light of the existing area and the coverage that's already there, that the buffer basically already exists. Natural buffer already exists. And I'm not really sure if, at this point, Glenn, you may know better than I, that whether there's going to actually be some removal of the forestry that's there in order to have plantings, which would make a lot of sense. And I don't even know if that's the case. I don't even know. But, again, my discussion, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to discuss this with the solicitor who was president early, president earlier, that's Ms. Salvatore, not Dan. And my understanding was that, at least her discussion with the planning department, was that the west buffer was sufficient as a wooded area. If that's not the case, that's not the case.
No, I'll add on to that.
Sure.
Just going, just taking a step back for this, when we realized, when we got this application, that, when we compared it with the landscape plan that was recorded for the first installation, it didn't match. So that's not something us in the planning department, that we just wanted to say, okay, fine, we're going to let that go. We wanted to bring it to the board, you know, for you to think about and for you to vote on. At that time, when this project was approved, you know, special use criteria was not required. Like, right now, every project that needs a special use permit has to meet the criteria. At that time, it did not have to. So they did get a variance on the buffer for the north and east at 10 feet each. I was out there with the applicant, and there are substantial woods out there that do screen the solar, so I'd leave it at your discretion, if the approved landscape plan does need to be implemented, or if it's sufficient as it is right now. The landscape plan also, the one that was recorded for the first project, also showed buffering on the south side, and the south side, you know, where you're going to get your most solar. Nothing was planted there, and the rationale for not planting there was because later on, there was intention to build this project.
That's correct.
That you have before you. So we've recommended, so as not to impede the solar efficiency, is to do that 20-foot buffer, because not only it's the south part, this array is the north part of this new ones, new array. So to be consistent with the special use permit criteria, we're recommending the 20-foot buffer, but keep it low, so it doesn't impede on the solar efficiency. And then the other sides of the new array, 20 feet all the way around, on west, south, and east.
I just think, and I also think, and certainly, I'm not suggesting that I want to see my client get cited for any type of violation. I would just respectfully suggest that the two issues are separate, in that this approval should not be conditioned on something being done to the prior approval. And again, based on the reasons given, I think, it's not like Mr. McCary, who I think's got a pretty decent track record, turned around and said, "I just don't feel like planting. I just don't want to do it." I mean, there were definite reasons. The plantings on the other borders were effectuated. You had, again, substantial forestry on one side, and as Mr. Monika indicated, the reason for the not planting on the south was his anticipation there would be within a reasonably short time, there would be another application for an additional array.
Mr. O'Neil.
Are you aware of any complaints from the neighbors that those plantings were never achieved in the last three, four years?
No, no. I remember there was, my recollection is that there was, at the time of the last application, there was one, a buddy to the north, who had some concerns about visual. But as far as, I've been made aware, and I probably would have been made aware by the client, or by the client, at the very least, about any complaints. I don't believe that the planning department or the zoning and building department have received any complaints, although I don't know.
No, we have not, but you're correct. It was Tuscan Court, I think, on the north.
That's right, yep.
Mr. McDonald.
The second, the three recommendations that the staff has given us, to maintain, the second one, the middle one, low plantings shall be installed on the south side of the existing array, which, in other words, those plantings are being put in place to maintain a buffer, if this is approved, between what will be two existing solar arrays. And I don't understand the need for that.
Well, it's also because you have special use permit criteria that can't, you can't waive it. So there has to be a 20-foot buffer on the north side of the array. There's also going to be land clearing here, so it's a combination of not only, it's not so much for the screening, but it is to meet the criteria, which you can't waive, and it's to compensate for the loss of trees that are going to be cut for this project.
Okay, thank you. And again, we have had this discussion, planning department, and I have this discussion about the fact, and I understand that under the new rules, that, and we're all familiar with the torrent of new rules, that one of them is that there are specific objective criteria. Now, it's not just special use permit and what may be good and what might not be affect the neighborhood and might not. No, now, this is outlined. But I think, again, as a practical matter, and that was my point, Mr. McDonald, is I don't understand, I mean, at the time, okay, I mean, if there was an approval and there was variance, there were variances granted for the other two corners, the other two sides, rather, that's, I understand. I mean, but there was a reason for it going forward. It wasn't disclosed at the time. I'm not sure at that moment it was known by Mr. McCary. I'm sure it would have been disclosed and considered. And again, we've got, on the other side, in effect, there is already this extensive buffer. So, again, the reasons weren't just, you know, flippant disregard for what's going on. And as far as the criteria today are concerned, again, as Mr. Monika has indicated, those weren't in place at the time, okay? And granted, we only applied for relief on, I actually, we applied, I think we applied for all four, if I'm not mistaken, and we only got two. I think that's what ended up happening, I think. But, so that's basically where we are at this point. And again, it's not that I'm unaware of what the planning department had recommended. I read the staff report. It's not that they're, you know, it's not a gotcha moment or anything like that to me. They were perfectly upfront about what, you know, about the conditions. I just thought that, my understanding was that there was some further discussion on it, apparently that wasn't the case. And Ms. Salvatore's no longer here, so...
Yeah, no, this is more of a comment, you know, just when I was reading through the staff report, the analysis of the objective criteria, I mean, it does seem to me, since the town has come up with objective, defensive criteria that is in keeping with previous iterations of the town's solar regulations. So to me, it makes sense, but maybe it does seem a little odd that that buffer, but I think it is in keeping with the intent of the previous iterations of the regulations, or by two cents.
That's all just two cents?
Well, I think it's because, it's not necessarily, it's not a waiver, because we're not challenging something that's in the land development regulation, subdivision regulations, and it's not a variance. So, but it is a special use permit. And although there are objective criteria that have been listed, I would suggest that in the event that one may appear to be impracticable, to use the words of the development and subdivision regulations, that they need not be applied to reach a result that doesn't make a lot of sense. I perfectly understand the position of the planning department as far as recognizing this issue and seeking to address it. I get it. But again, I would point out that back then, these specific objective criteria were not in place, okay? So that's gone, that's done. And again, I don't want to keep repeating myself, so I'll just leave it at that.
Can I just add one thing? So we, the solicitor and I, we did talk before this, and obviously, we talked about the whole intent of the screening is to screen solar array from neighbors. That's what it's all about. So when we're talking about the current system that's there, the west side, there's certainly plenty of trees there to screen them from Billington Circle, they're higher up, but you can't see anything from there. So there is a sufficient buffer already existing, and that project was approved before the special use, special use permit criteria was, had to be enforced. So I think you have flexibility there on the west side. On the south side, it's a difference, because the south side of the old one is the north side of the new one, where we're required to have the 20-foot buffer. So that's why we're just recommending the lower screening. You're meeting the criteria, but it's not impeding the solar efficiency. So I think that is a compromise, at least at that location. On the other three sides, I don't see how you could waive them, give a variance, whatever it would be called, for the criteria, only because you're, you are locked into that. And the ordinance probably does need to be changed to give you some more flexibility, you know, depending on different circumstances. But that's where we are now.
And I mean, anything, and as it applies to the new array, I mean, yeah, I mean, there are, certainly those criteria would all apply. Again, I'm not, and I had to ask, because I know that there are, I know we've, in the criteria, we talked about, you know, the importance of access to the panels and whatnot, and I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, you're suggesting that, again, on the south side of the existing array, the north side, that there should be between the two, that there is to be plantings between the two?
I think it's shown on the plan.
No, and again, I realize that. I mean, we're in the discussion now about the feasibility of it, or the, I mean, or the practicality of it in light of, you know, I know it's addressing the criteria that are existence today, but, I mean, I just don't know if it has any impact on any access between the two panels. I know we have listed, there's free access, we've got it designed that way, which is necessary under the criteria, and public safety standpoint would be. So...
Mr. O'Neil.
I think what we're getting at here, and what Mr. Parryton is trying to say, is like, you're like, no, no, it's not, it's not working. Do you hear me? It's not working. No. Let me grab this one as well.
Come on. Better? Yeah. Is that the objective and criteria we're being forced to come up with and enforce because of the Rhode Island Legislature's changes, in this case, may actually have some slight negative impact on the actual efficiency of the array structure. And if that weren't the case, we might consider waiving that buffer to make sure that there was no impact on the efficiency of the solar array structure. That's kind of what I'm getting from what Glenn just said, and how we're trying to interpret the special use permit requirements. Is that more or less what you were saying, Mr. Parryton?
Yeah, I should have you talk for me at more meetings. I, yeah, I mean, again, to me, it's an issue of, and it goes back to when my first discussions with the client after he met with Mr. Monika on site, about his reasoning for not having the buffers planted. I mean, he said, and I have, I didn't go out there within the last, let's say, I haven't been out there in the last year or so, but I've been out to the site, and it is, and look at, I'm just looking, the overhead picture speaks volumes. I mean, it is a very densely wooded area. And again, understanding completely that there are rules in place, and that it's to cover the bases that the request has been made to have these plantings. I, you know, it doesn't seem, I don't see the north-south, between the two panels, the two arrays, excuse me, the plantings there, I mean, what do you, I mean, is the buffer to screen one panel, set of panels from the other? I don't know. I mean, I don't know unless it would have a direct impact on people to the north, but that's already been ostensibly taken care of by the fact that, because don't forget, the existing array is closer, is the one, is closer to the north border. So, but I would assume that, the timing is everything. Mr. McCary just walked in, so if I could ask him to come forward just to, and I don't want to rehash, obviously, all we've talked about. The discussion now is on the, and Andy, I'll make sure he tells you his name and everything, but the discussion is that, talking about the conditions seeking to be imposed by the planning department with respect to plantings on the south and the west side, in the southwest side of the new array, we're talking about your reasons for not planting initially, to the south because of this array, also to the west because of the existing forested areas. So, and I didn't, I was hoping you would show, so I could at least have you address the board in that regard. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, of course. My name's Jason McCary. I own the property at 3100 Diamond Hill Road. So, the buffer, we planted the buffer on the north side with, you know, trees that will grow fairly tall, you know, 15, 20, 30 feet. We planted it to the east, and in that portion of my property, the east would be my neighbor to the east. You know, I go behind his property. You know, I go behind his property, so I planted the trees along that buffer. And the south is, is where we had planned for the second array, so I didn't plan that, plant that, but I, if we didn't get approved for the second array, I certainly would plant it. And the west is a little tricky because it's very close to the pond. Longbrook runs behind my property, and the pond is somewhat of a recipient from Longbrook, so it gets very close to the water. So, to be honest with you, I wasn't sure if I should, if I'm going to cut down trees to plant new trees, because it's already forested to a degree, I would need to go for DEM approval, I think, because I think it gets within the buffer.
Can I just add a couple things, too? Just what our ordinance says is that with the exception of roof-mounted structures, installations, oh, shall plant and properly, shall plant and properly maintain a 20-foot wide vegetative buffer surrounding primber. Never mind what I was saying. This, my other point that I do want to say is you can treat this, I think, if you want to treat these installations as one, as one big installation, given the practicality of the location in between the two, the south of the existing, the north of the proposed, because there are some utilities in here, there's a need to pass and repass through them, so the practicality of it, other than to meet our special use criteria, you know, on the ground there, true, is it going to have much benefit? So, perhaps we can consider this as one large array which has, which does not have an in-between section, where we could have the buffer not in the middle, but around the other, around the other four sides.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McGonigal.
Mr. McCary, how, what's the distance between, when constructed, the old north array and the new south array? How many feet in between the two of them?
I don't have an exact measurement, but I'm going to guess, I'm going to guess a 40 or 50 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the thought behind that as well is if you do, if you did consider it as one rectangular array with a gap in the middle to be able to get back, you know, down the hill and up the hill, the other part of my property is down in the valley, so the idea was to be able to use that to be able to go down to the valley, so it would be in between the two arrays, if you will. And that was the whole idea of plant, no plant, second array, you know, so it was just, you know, trying to get the whole plan on paper and being able to, you know, get approval for it.
The thrust of my question, it's not practical for you, not that you would plan to, but you would put some type of a structure between the two arrays. That's dead ground.
No.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely couldn't.
Mr. D'Ambrosia.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know where we are at the moment, but I, I'm in favor of Mr. Modica's suggestion. And as far as all the other buffers, I support the position that he takes. There's no one in this room that makes these rules. So, he has to live with them, and we should respect his position, but it would be, I'd like to see the requirement for buffer plantings between the two arrays be eliminated.
Mr. D'Ambrosia.
Yeah, I agree with the idea of looking at it as one total array. I think it makes sense. They're essentially connected. I do think that with the consideration of the amount of clearing that's happening, the adjacency to the wetlands and the pond, I think that the landscape plan that's shown on these, showing the east, west, and south sides, I think those buffers should definitely be incorporated into this plan to help kind of mitigate the disturbance there. But I don't see a reason to provide a buffer between the two arrays. Thanks.
Mr. Zuck.
Kind of to piggyback on that comment, I, I'd be comfortable not having a buffer between the existing array and the proposed array. I also, considering the significant vegetation, I personally don't see the benefit of having the buffer to the west of the arrays, but Mr. D'Ambrosia, you just said that to have that buffer might help mitigate glare. Did I understand that correctly? Because I take your opinion.
No, I didn't, I did not say glare.
Okay.
It was more to mitigate habitat destruction. So, anywhere that there is disturbance around that perimeter, especially on the west side where it's closer to the water, that's where I would say, you know, it may not need to be like an evergreen screen for buffering, but a planting that restores the native vegetation there would be more beneficial.
I see. Thank you.
To one extent, and by the way, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the end of your comments, I'm sorry, I just had a question. It was an issue, we had another solar project I was involved in, there was a question about glare. And I know that the panels, these panels are designed much like those where there is a material on the panels that cuts glare down.
Yeah, they were painted matte black specifically to address any glare that might be taking place on the other side of the valley from the neighbors to the, to the west. So, I actually have a few friends over there, and they've said that they look out their window, and they don't even see the panels. So, that's, that was the intent.
Other questions, comments? Okay. Mr. Potters, you're all set?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to open up a public hearing. So, if there's anyone here in the audience or with us virtually, please come forward to the podium and give us your name and address for the record, or if you're virtual, just click on your little hand there and raise your hand, and we'll be off. Mr. Modica, anybody in the queue? No one in the queue? Okay? No one in the audience? So, I'll close the public hearing, hearing at 7:34 PM. Mr. Comments to the board?
I'd be happy to make a motion, but I'm completely confused, so. I tried to follow along as closely as I could, but I got lost somewhere in the west side, wilderness. So, being that we're combining, or the recommendation is to look at this as one single project, is that, does there need to be something done to?
Not so much a single project, but as a single array, a connected, one solar system.
So.
Mr. Butler, by, when you make the motion, by inference, if you just have with the recommendations and read number one and number three and leave number two out, and then make a specific recommend, a specific statement that the array is to be treated, the north and south are to be treated as a single array, I think that covers it.
Well, number one says plantings should be added to the west side, and number three says shall be installed, south, west, and east. So, I guess, is it should or is it shall? And there's been a lot of back and forth about whether anything should be done on the west side, so I don't know if number one and number three are still relevant, and if the proposal was for two separate arrays, and now we're saying it's one array, is that really what's before us? So, what do we have to do in a motion to combine them, and then where exactly is the buffers going to be?
We've been talking through this, and I think if, what I'm, what I'm hearing is what you, what the planning board has discussed is possibly no buffer on the west side of the existing array. And I believe the board has been discussing no buffer on the south side of the, of the existing array. And I believe we, we have still talked about, and our, or the board is still in agreement that there should be a 20-foot wide vegetative buffer along the west, the south, and the east side of the proposed array. And that is, that is shown on the landscape plan.
So, it's basically approval with just condition number three?
Yeah, and I think you're going to have to, in your motion, state that you are treating this holistically as one, as just one solar array. Therefore, that would obviate the condition of planting on the north side of this one.
I'll give it a whirl, and we'll see.
Let's see what happens.
I'll invite the solicitor to correct me along the way. So, in regards to 3100 Diamond Hill Road, assesses plot 29, lot 42, I'll make a motion that we approve the combined master and preliminary plan with the note that we are viewing the existing solar array and the new or proposed solar array as one unified project. The approval comes with the condition that a 20-foot wide vegetative buffer shall be installed on the south, west, and east sides of the proposed array, but not the north The recommendation is based on the planning staff's memo to the planning board dated October 22nd, 2025.
That sounded about right.
Second.
End of motion. I think Mr. McDonald's second.
Second. Okay.
All right, motion by Mr. Butler, second by Mr. McDonald. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
I want to, I hate being difficult, I really do. I, but thanks for the discussion, I really appreciate it. I want to thank the planning department for engaging in the discussion and allowing us to look into it a little bit deeper and to hopefully reach a practical result, so I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Potters. Item number seven, Town Council Recommendation, Ordinance Number 25-22, and Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance to Establish a Residential Compound Use by Special Use Permit. This ordinance amends the zoning ordinance to prohibit the subdivision of land on lots where comprehensive permits have been approved. Ms. McBarry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, in February of 2025, the Town Council adopted Ordinance Number 2426A, and this created the residential compound use. The ordinance allows the subdivision of a lot with multiple pre-existing legally non-conforming homes. So, this ensures that each home can be placed on its own lot, even if the dimensional standards aren't fully met by the newly created lots. This is in order to subdivide, oh, sorry, excuse me, in order to subdivide under this ordinance, a special use permit is required. So, since adoption of this ordinance, and as you all know, there's a decent amount of comprehensive permit applications that have come before you all and us, and we feel like there is some clarification on this ordinance that is needed. So, with regards to comprehensive permits, already granting zoning flexi, there's, they already grant zoning flexibility to encourage affordable housing developments. The concern that the planning department has is that applicants could use those allowances to build multiple structures on one lot, and then turn around and later seek a subdivision under this residential compound use. So, the planning department feels that this would be creating a self-imposed hardship that was, would result in non-conforming lots. So, the new proposed criteria, it would be, there would be a number seven criteria, and it would state, "Any lot that includes affordable housing as approved under a comprehensive permit shall not be entitled to the provisions of this section if any of the resulting subdivided lots do not meet the dimensional requirements for that zone." And when you all came in today, there was a piece of paper at everybody's seat, because we are adding an extra line to this. So, additionally, we're proposing the following sentence to be included, as with deed restrictions, which what make a dwelling unit affordable, they do expire. So, the additional sentence would state, "This criteria shall be in effect in perpetuity, regardless if the term of the deed restriction has expired." So, the planning department feels that this ordinance maintains consistency with state law and the comprehensive plan, because state law encourages zoning incentives for affordable housing, and the comprehensive plan supports adjusting zoning standards to allow more affordable units. But this amendment keeps that flexibility intact while avoiding unintended outcomes and contradicting the town zoning framework. So, the planning department recommends that the planning board forward a favorable recommendation to the Town Council on Zoning Ordinance 25, 2522.
Mr. D'Ambrosia.
All right. I have a question that will maybe help explain this to me.
Okay.
And I'm going to relate it to something that we recently heard, where I think it was last month, we had someone who wanted to put another building on their property as a low, or affordable housing. How would a project like that be affected by this ordinance?
Are we allowed to discuss?
We can't, we can't discuss a specific project, but for example, there's a property with a house on it, and they, and they want to put another house that has affordable And later, and you, and the board approves that comprehensive permit, so you've got two principal buildings on a lot. And then, a few years later, let's say they sell it, or the same owner, it doesn't really matter, they want to subdivide that lot. And if they can't meet the minimum lot area or any other type of, or any other type of dimensional requirement, they would not be allowed to subdivide that lot. They would never be allowed to subdivide that lot.
So, that property would always have those two structures?
It would always have those two.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Comments?
I think it just, it just tightens up a potential loophole. I think, you know, Mr. D'Ambrosia kind of pointed that out last month, that, you know, it's feasible because applicants are being incredibly creative about their comprehensive permits. We just don't want to saddle a planning board that's sitting here 30 years from now, or 99 years from now, with, you know, an unintended consequence. I think the Town Council passed the original ordinance under the, with the understanding that there were only a handful of properties in the town that would fall under this ordinance. And so, I think, you know, I think we're just tightening up a loophole that may or may not ever exist, but at least it's, it's tightened. So, I think it's a, it's a good amendment to the ordinance.
Mr. McDonald.
Just a purely formal, a question. What we had, sent to us was 25-22, and what was placed on the desk is 25-pound-pound. Is this, is this 2522, or is this going to be assigned another number later?
Yeah, that's my bad. That was before the ordinance had an official number of 22, so. I, that, that, what I put down in front of you was just to show you where that addition, how that additional sentence would look in the ordinance. Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's not unofficial anything.
All right. Thank you.
Well, I agree with Mr. Butler. You never know what the unintended consequences may be until you're faced with something, and it's, you go, oh, my gosh. Well, in this case, I think what we're trying to do is, it would be at least that particular unintended consequence. So, I'm in favor of forwarding this amendment to, this ordinance to the Town Council.
So, I will make a motion that we send a positive recommendation to the Town Council regarding Ordinance 25-22 as amended, that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Costa. Any other discussion? Hearing none? 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 All in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it. Item number eight, Director's Report, Comprehensive Permits.
I was going to prepare something for the board, but I didn't have time. So we'll try to discuss it at your December 4 meeting.
Okay. Last but not least, approval of the proposed 2026 Planning Board Calendar. Is there anything that?
These are, it's the last Thursdays of the month.
Yep.
As, as usual. And then everything gets backed up from there, you know, when the TRC meets and when the deadline is.
No conflicts of holidays and so on and so forth?
No, I think we're good.
Motion to approve? Motion by Mr. McDonald to approve, second by Mr. Dambrosia. Both? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And finally, motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. O'Neil, second by the entire board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.